And wages to run that forward for years, so our, our heart really goes out to those people. So we have a moment of silence, keep those people who were involved with dealing with that, and especially the little or six people that lost their lives in that horrific accident. So a moment of silence, break us dealing with that and keep them in your thoughts at first. Thank you.
Okay, that's my fourth.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the meeting, February 22nd.
Second? They also asked the trust base for a motion to accept the payment of the bill for the month of March. That was the part.
I didn't know what we were planning to catch.
No.
So when I'm back, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes meeting.
Thank you. And then a motion to... Oh, we'll call Mr. Suddles.
Yes.
Mrs. Debit?
Yes.
Yeah. Motion to pay the bills for the month of March in the amount of five hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and two cents. Our main motion to pay the bills of March in the amount of five hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and two cents.
Same. Any discussion? Yes. Quite elevated, yeah.
Well, we did pay. We made a check to Striker for one hundred and sixty-nine thousand four.
Costs.
Yeah, and then we also got Morris for forty thousand nine hundred and forty-six.
So those are major purposes.
Yeah.
And then that really, that one scrap line we get back.
Um, we... Is that the money that we got back?
It's for our mother's income costs. Our mother's welfare.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, that's the money.
The remaining twenty-one thousand.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions? Okay, we'll call Mr. Carrera.
Yes.
Mrs. Debit?
Yes.
Mr. Suddles?
Yes.
I am going to ask you to table the motion to accept the financial statements since today is the first day of the month, but I had, they were going to have a chance to do that. Yeah, we'll make the motion to table the financial statements for.
I'll say it. Any discussion? Good.
Okay, Mrs. Debit?
Yes.
Mr. Suddles?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Uh, communications, it appears we have none.
Thank you. We're going to change the format just a little bit before we take a couple of comments on the agenda. We're going to introduce Troy Rhodes from Ohio Edison. We've been working with, I guess, the replacement, is that right Troy, the year of her replacement?
Yes, Lisa had.
Yeah.
She retired back this time.
Yes, we've been working with Lisa for a number of months to address our streetlights in the township. And she retired, Troy picked up the reins and invited him to come to our meeting. And I had to talk about potential upgrading our current lights to LED. And he's an expert, so thank you for coming. And you don't have to wait until the end of the meeting, so thanks to all the trustees for making this.
Yeah, thank you very much, sir. As Mr. Carrera said, I received a call a few weeks ago from them asking about some streetlights. And just to come tonight to provide just an overview and an estimate of what those streetlight costs are, I passed on the statement, she passed it down to you. So you have some documents in front of me. What I'd like to start off first of all is, yeah, I do carry part of Trump County now, but I've been doing this for about six years now. I've got Columbia County, Columbia County, Forest, Charle County, down to where our old plant used to be along the river down there, a little bit of portage, saw a busy man in this area here, external affairs. What we spoke about is currently the township of Brookfield is under an ESIP rate. And that ESIP is an acronym for Efficiency Streetlight Program. That streetlight program was put into place back in 2008. That at that time, communities had the option to opt-in to that rate. I'm sorry.
Mr. Carr?
Opt-in to that rate or opt-out of that rate. And what that rate was, was it's a, was a rate developed for Ohio Edison municipalities that had basically went to the PUCO and said, hey, our streetlights are too expensive. We don't have monies to help with that development in our communities. Can you come up with a lesser rate so the municipalities can put money back into their, invest into their communities? So that's where that rate came from. Based on that information, what the concern is, my concern, which you see in front of you, especially from a fiscal officer standpoint, what you would see is, is if there's a one sheet page here. In there, what it talks about is sort of a proposal based on the number of lights that the community has, which is four hundred and twenty-eight streetlights. Those four hundred and twenty-eight streetlights are scattered throughout the township. Based on that ESIP rate, and on a monthly average, somewhere around thirty-seven hundred dollars, thirty-six hundred dollars is what the township pays for that monthly bill. Go forward with the fiscal officer, look that up on there. But what you see here is, if you were to convert all of your lights to LED, your price will actually go up. Right? Which shouldn't be, which may not be as price, Lisa may have prefaced this to you way back then.
She did.
What, what the hope was, or what the challenge is, is that sometimes communities, that's okay, because they are willing to utilize some streetlights for different purposes, that they are willing to offset that cost because of what those lights may do for you. As Mr. Carrera and I spoke about, some communities where you see them putting, you don't have to be all there, is what I would say. So those four hundred and twenty-eight streetlights that you have, you don't necessarily, if you choose to convert to that LED light or to those LED lights, you don't have to convert a hundred, four, four hundred and twenty-eight. You can select where you want to convert those. As we talked about, maybe your business issue, where you want to get that more bright or pleasing view for the community. So what we, we would just commit into an inventory of those established lights, and those lights is what we would convert this time. What I have with me is a, and I will send an email with, for everybody to get a copy of that. But this is the LED tariff is what it goes by. Basically, what the tariff just talks about is, is that you will, once you sign the agreement, like put a copy of that agreement in there, that it defines what you want to do. You will then transition off of that ESIP rate for every light that you go into the streetlight rate. So at, at some point in time, you'll have that teeter tottering effect, right? Where ESIP lights go down the streetlight rate, or streetlight bills go up based on that number of lights that you do as you're being built for them. So it would be a gradual increase through that time period. The option you have under this streetlight rate is three things. You have three options. The first option is that you can purchase the streetlight or the LED fixture ahead, and that's roughly quarter of ten dollars a fixture. And what you do is you pick twenty of them, quarter of ten dollars, two thousand, whatever dollars that is. We come out, we replace those twenty lights and go on that new rate for those specific twenty lights you need on the head to go. The second option is to finance those. And you can finance through Ohio Edison, and of course, there's going to be a percentage or increase in there. If you look at your, that proposal, you'll see down in the left corner, the program cost options, which will show what that potentially could be from an interest rate standpoint. The third option, which a number of communities that have signed up for this, is on failure. And then there's no cost for that fixture, for that twenty light. It's just a matter of every time that light goes out, we just convert that to LED light. There's no capital cost or upfront cost involved, it just transitioned. The concern with that is, four hundred and twenty lights, twenty-eight lights, or replace on failure, it might be twenty-thirty, twenty-forty before all of those lights get replaced. Whether that matters or not, that's just, you don't have that capital cost to worry about. You just go through that transition.
As, as those lights are replaced, we're paying the higher rate.
Correct, correct. Now, I will tell you that there is a wash. The majority of your lights are the hundred watt, one-seventy-five watt bulbs. Today, that's roughly about seven dollars and fifty cents a light. Tomorrow, it's nine dollars and twenty cents for that light. So that's where the increase. The other lights, the seven, the fifteen, the four, every one of those, the price is actually decreased on that. It's for whatever reason, it's the wattage, it's the usage, whatever it is, is that the increase in that wattage reduces the cost of the bulb. Makes sense to you, right? So in that situation, those twenty-five bulbs are actually cheaper to go on the new rate. The challenge is, is where are those at, are they in the right areas?
Correct.
To at least take advantage of that versus the four hundred, than on the traditional light. My opinion is that I don't think it's worth it to a community to spend that kind of money upfront, unless it's for that business type of experience. Because it is a huge capital increase or cost to a community to do that. That at some point in time, the utility, all utilities are going to have to come up with some kind of LED rate. Now, I can't guarantee you that it's going to be cheaper than what it is today, but patience may be a virtue in this situation. Just because you're talking from an O and M standpoint, almost five or six hundred dollars more a month, you're going to have to pay. If you put that capital expense in there, that's an added cost in there. But sometimes that's not the reason, right? So I think it's a good, it's, it's a delicate situation as far as the trustees have to take into account as far as what they want to gain by going LED in their community.
Aren't they, correct me if I'm wrong, we have incandescent lights now?
Yeah, either metal halide or high-pressure sodium.
Are they still being manufactured?
So, yes, by not your traditional. So GE no longer makes, Silvane is on the way out. So they're off-brand. You know, our company actually went out and purchased the inventory from one of the bulb manufacturers. I'm not sure which one that is. So when those run out, we're out. So we're going to have to make a decision right then. My suspicion is, within the next year and a half, we're going to be filing a rate case down in Columbus to transition all communities over to LED. The question is, how would that transition happen? And what cost would those transitions cost? I, I, I can only speculate that there's going to be some kind of increase in cost to all people for their lights. It's just a matter of how much is that increase.
And I'm sure you're aware, but we have seven lighting districts in Brooklyn, is that right? And that cost is, is not really ours, it's the residents. So for us to say, let's raise it, that means because it comes out of other taxes, it's every month, every year, twice a year.
Yeah.
So that, that's a concern also, is that even if we use, let's say, ARPA money or whatever for the initial purchase to cost our residents more in their taxes, that's a concern of mine.
Absolutely, I think trustee Suddles, you bring up a valid point. It's mine, I'm a taxpayer too, right? I mean, Canfield City, so I would give that expense too if they were to transition. What I will tell you though, is some communities are requesting, right? Some lighting districts, some residential developers are asking for those kind of lights. Understanding the cost increase. I would have to say that seven hundred dollars multiplied by twelve, multiplied by the number, that's pennies, right? But it's still money, right? At the end of the day, you have to be conscious about it for your community. I think what you find is, is that in, in this kind of form, getting, getting the pulse of your community and the understanding. That's why I would look at that business issue. I'm talking to the village's secret about the same thing, their downtown district. They're looking at just that, and it's a very financially strapped community. But they also know that those LED lights can help draw business to their downtown areas there. So in just looking, I think what's great about it is, is that, you know, when this, when this experimental lighting program came out about four years ago, there was a minimum of lights that you had to commit to, twelve lights. Today, there's not that commitment, but it doesn't make sense to convert two lights, right?
Yeah, the talk was always, I mean, we were at a meeting last year at the air station. They had talked about Miami trying to get this C-130 G.
Right.
And they talked about what we could do as different communities. And even Julie Green came here and talked to us about things that we could do. And it was proposed to upgrade to LED. And obviously, the light shine a little bit different in the safety aspect of it. But since then, I think we kind of talked of the possibility of maybe doing what's around the center and then coming up with our business district.
Right.
And letting everyone see kind of what it does and what it looks like. I know Hubbard Township just converted over finally.
In certain portions, yeah.
Yeah, so I know for me, rather than development, it's rather dark at night. It was a safety concern, you can't see things. So I kind of pushed this conversation, which is good, thank you for coming, finally. But I think, I mean, now that we have actual this information, obviously, we don't want to pass on giant costs.
Yeah, and, and again, I think, so, so the next step is for the township to talk about this and then say, or consider in the downtown square or the business district, let's look at that. Then let us, let us, Ohio Edison come in, do an inventory of what those lights are in that little corner. Now, my, my humble opinion is, is that probably the majority of them are going to be in that one hundred, one-seventy-five watt bulb. Just because those are your traditional lights and the bulb, it takes that. But when you look at some of your four hundred watts and some of your two-fifties, those are typically at intersections where it needs to be light. So you may see in that small segment, maybe not such an increase in cost. I think the challenge, and I think that you bring up a good point, is it's a different light. These LED lights are a different light than, than the residential areas may be used to. It's a more imposing light that maybe if it's in front of your house, moving up to the grill, that light's directly in front of you, right? Versus two houses down, where that fall that you get from the yellow light or the orange light, we'll call it that, right? Or it's a garage light, this LED light is a bright white light that's going to hit. So maybe to your point, go to the areas so the community can see what those lights look like. And with those falls, I think if you drive through Hubbard Township, especially off of three oh four, and go down some of those side roads and see in some of the residential areas, just what those lights look like. Not every community's set up like that, right? You, you may not have those traditional youngstown city streets where those houses are right on top of each other, right? And those streetlights are every fifteen house, right? Yours are more in every twenty houses, right? So that's another one that you have to be mindful of too. So there's a lot of information there, there's a lot you need to take into account. Anytime you've got my contact information.
One question, you give a check and get a type of thing, if we switch now, are we locked in that rate ever? Or if we go up again down the road?
Well, I mean, whenever Ohio Edison or First Energy Ohio puts in a rate increase or tariff, everybody's susceptible. And anytime, so that ESIP rate, I mean, fortunately, you know, not to get on the pole, but, you know, last year when the residential rates turned up, that was the first time in almost fifteen years that our rate two saw that drastic difference. This year, this utility rate hasn't changed since 2008. Now, the riders, those extra pennies, those extras, those evolves, those change. But the traditional rate itself, the cost for that, hasn't changed since 2008.
So it's almost like you said, going each dancing, each the seven lighting district to see what they want to do.
Yeah, I think that there's those opportunities. I mean, understanding where your lighting districts are, who's for that. And I'm not quite sure, I mean, that's between you and the county auditor as far as what you can or can't do based on them originally signing up for that assessment. If you can, or you can do that on their path, or you have to take that back, go above that, right? I think that's a question. I think what's, what's good for you is, is to be, be in tune with those assessments, because there are communities out there that don't stay up on those assessments and fall over on the back end of that.
Well, we're presently experiencing, that's what, looking into this, but at least one, maybe two of our lighting districts, we're not bringing in enough money to pay a bill.
Right.
Because we have some tax, people are not paying no taxes in those districts. We can't raise those rates based on the fact that there's deficiency in the tax rate. So, you know, we're, we're behind and we're wanting at least two. So, you know, to add an additional cost, those are the things we need to talk with our auditor about also.
Understand.
Well, thank you, Troy.
So wonderful. So if I may, just, I've got two other things I'd like to talk to you about.
Sure, absolutely.
One is just, this here is a sheet that talks about our vegetation and just the clearance. So when we're out there, people always ask questions as far as tree trimming, things of that. How far away should you be from the poles and stuff like that? It's just a document that you can have, it's just, gives a little bit. But what it also talks about is what trees should probably, it makes sense to plant near a tree so that you're not getting our trimming and beautification look, the seeds otherwise.
Do you have that digitally and I can put it on our Facebook?
We should, yeah. So, and then the next.
Put it on our Facebook or whatever it is too.
So then the next thing is, I will send this to you digitally also. And basically, it's just sort of a sheet that I developed because it's, you know, the two questions that are all asked. How to report a streetlight? How to report signage in general? This document sort of, as far as calling it in or.
That would be slightly better.
Yes, I would do.
For the entire meeting. So now, this being, thank you, I've spent a very long meeting for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of your jobs, ladies and gentlemen, she wore a lot of hats.
Yes, she did.
Thank you. All right, at this point, we're going to move on to the public comment, only on the agenda items only. If the end of the meeting will have more time for this discussion. So before we open the meeting to that, like just a couple of. We break. We ask about agenda, we're not going to deep discussion. We'll be brief with the questions to make out, because as we get on the end, we may ask you questions to that. So we don't want to have like a long-winded discussion, so we'll answer. General lighting articles, about the agenda items. So if you get too long-winded, I'm going to ask you to hold off till later, so keep that heads up. And then as I call on someone's name and where you live in the township, so we just know who's here for a call. Okay, and except that, are there any questions on the agenda items we are talking about tonight?
Okay, one question, since he's here, can I?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
The question I have is, has Ohio Edison done an analysis on something like the life cycle cost of an LED versus the traditional light? Is there any savings there to offset the increase in the rate? You know what I'm saying? An LED lasts fifty years as opposed to five years, there's going to be a saving period.
So I would imagine they have, but, so the challenge is, is that... So here's my analogy. That streetlight that you're paying for, maybe nine dollars and twenty cents is an LED light versus that seven dollars and twenty-two, that's not all light costs. It's like your Armstrong cable box and your Armstrong remote that I've had for fifteen years and I'm still paying two dollars every month. I think I paid for it before, right? So those stranded costs are paying for the pole, fixture, all of that type of stuff. I think that a traditional streetlight today, you're getting anywhere from fifteen to twenty years' life in there. That LED, you're going to get just as much. I will tell you that today's fixture, it's a bulb replacement with fixture strings. Tomorrow, under the LED, it's the whole fixture.
Right, having said that, is there, is there anything to, you know, to say towards replacing these things? And then the cost of LEDs traditionally being cheaper, is there an analysis anywhere that shows the cost of what it takes to run an LED versus what it takes to run your old light? And why there would be an increase that substantial with, I hear you talking.
Yeah, so I think that, again, that's how they came up with that base cost. I think, so today, my line neighbor turned down and said what we were talking about down there. He looked up, an incandescent light today is actually thirteen dollars, where the LED light is eleven. But there, but I think it's skewed because the supply and demand issue.
Where, where can I find numbers like that, that gets to my question? You may know, I mean, we don't.
Yeah, so I would say.
We have to take your word before now.
No, yeah, yeah, no, no, don't take my word.
From the manufacturer.
Yeah, so you'd have to go to a manufacturer, or if you go out to firstenergycourt.com, and just type in, and you'll go, get out on our website, and there'll be information out there.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any, again, questions on the agenda items only tonight? Okay, thank you. All right, Chief LaStina.
Thank you, sir. For the month of March, we responded with five hundred and twenty-six calls. That resulted in ninety-three reports. Of those, eight were crash reports, eighty-five were incident reports. We had forty-two arrests for the month, for those, four were drug-related. One in regards of theft, rape, and burglary. Six arrests from assault, domestic violence, or protection were violations. Three people arrested, three that are resisting arrest, fleeing or obstructing official business. Ten more arrests were also made. We had twenty-nine traffic citations for the month. Of those, six were for driving under suspension or without a license. Eight miscellaneous equipment offenses, seven miscellaneous moving offenses. Three OBI citations were issued, a DUI citation. Six feet, one seatbelt or child restraint. To correction the last one, that was thirty-six. I think we had some, some sergeant's office, I've got, that's my, that green on the report there. So that was some changes for last one. For month of March, there was one reported rape, rape, and burglary. We responded fourteen assault or domestic disturbance calls and four criminal trespass calls. Officers responded to a complaint of vandalism or criminal damaging six times. And seven thefts were reported. We had three identity thefts, no robberies, no sex crimes for the month we reported. And we investigated six incidents of threats menacing or telephone harassment. We had no overdoses for March. And officers responded to ten calls with disturbance and or fight. Eleven incidents of suspicious activity were investigated, as well as two suspicious persons and nineteen suspicious vehicles. We had sixty-eight service calls, six parking or traffic complaint calls, and your officers assisted thirteen to save a motorist. We had fourteen handling complaints and officers responded to twenty-one alarm drops. Your officers patrolled fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty-six miles using eight hundred and fourteen point three gallons of fuel. Miles were up a little bit, we had some officers traveling out of town a couple of weeks for the training. For the month of March, we had no reimbursed overtime and fifty-seven point five hours of regular overtime. That's all in the report. The only other thing of interest was corporal hockey. They'd given several complaints of students at the school being sold date products. And officers put together a compliance check with a local business that we received complaints and subsequently arrested the owner of that business on March fourteenth for selling fake products of hundreds. The owner of the company said that should not be a problem moving forward, so he said we'll stay compliant. But we will make checks and make sure they do stay compliant. So that's all in the report.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Chief, I know it covers your department, but more than that, but you're, I know you were the one that started the Easter egg hunt. I know you were the one that started the Easter egg hunt. In Dalta, and your officers, and you were down there this weekend in a kind of inclement day, but I.
I was not a granddaughter, so.
But what that has become, when did you start? How many years did you?
You remember? Well, I started on the Green with Dan Sissine, actually, started at the church doing a couple of years. Then Jan took over as trustee, and when she left, I kind of picked up, so I don't know when she left.
Yeah, well, Jan has been on the ground for 14 years because Ron, Ron replaced her. No, Ron replaced, yeah. But what I'm getting at is what it's become. We've outgrown, you said it started in the Green. We did it here, and it went down to our township park and.
Yeah, it looked wonderful, or others in the Green. And then it waited until.
Tala, the office coordinator, police coordinator, also took it by the bull by the horns. What a great turnout we had, 175, she's estimated.
190.
We, uh.
She said the first one 190.
The first one was kind of like 180-ish, and there was some stragglers, so we were 190-ish. And, uh, we did some more configuring, close to 80 for the second.
For the second one. And the participation she got from donations from our community, from our workers, this has become... I had a gentleman approach me in trustee Debbett's, and he just moved to our community about six years ago. And he wanted to find somebody to thank them and be direct towards Dalta. But he was like, this is like a hallmark. He was so impressed with the community turnout, the interaction between the community and, and both the township employees. But I just want to let you know, because I know this is going to be your last one, how much I appreciate the fact that you got that started and the vote on the assessments.
Thank you, it's, it's been wonderful, it's, it's a nice community.
Well, it's hard.
Glad she's picked up and.
She's doing a great job.
Strong.
Yeah.
So good job, Tala.
All right, continue, Chief.
Item one, if we last meeting you approved the contract, go ahead with the lighting, which is complete, that was finished up Friday night, up 7:00. So, all the lighting out there is done. We did look at and added a change of order, I just need to approve. We did a wall path on the south side of it. They put a temporary light up so we could see what that looked like, that's on there. Because as that gets fenced in, that's going to be dark on that corner of the building. So it took from $10,450 up to $10,900, that's $450 to put a wall cap on. If you would approve.
And I've looked into two other proposals we had, even with that additional $450, that the prime lighting is still below.
We're under, yeah.
So that's, that's good, the fact that it's all right to add that if it doesn't then go.
Well, that goes to the second item. That's all that is, and when you were talking about LEDs and how much they project out, because we had talked about just putting the LED floods going out to that west parking lot and the impound, that additional lighting. And I didn't want that shining, especially with the foliage off at these homes. So, what we looked at was taking a pole and bringing the pole up and out. So that light doesn't have to be focused out and can be down. That's, that's item 21.
The 1270.
The 1270, and that still keeps us under.
Yeah, I, I looked it over, I appreciate you providing us, because yes, that still keeps us.
And now.
So does someone make a motion for the worst item?
I can, I'd like to approve the change in order with prime electric for the carport lighting to add to the quote of $150, which the total is $10,900.
I'll second. Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Salmons?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera?
Yes.
Mrs. Devitt? Yes.
The agenda, the addition for the floodlight?
I make a motion to approve the addition of floodlight on the corner of the police garage to cover additional parking area and impound. It costs $1,270.
270.
Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ferrera?
Yes.
Mrs. Devitt? Yes. Mr. Salmons?
Yes. And then, Chief Losina, that's all I have. Please, the servants.
Thank you. For the month of March, we ran a total of 186 emergency runs. Of those, 165 were emergency medical. We had three structured fires, six motor vehicle crashes, one vehicle fire, one miscellaneous fire, two service calls, four reports of wires and trees down, four fire alarm investigations. We had mutually entered the township 11 times, and we went out of the township 31 times, totaling the 186 runs.
Chief, we might stop for a minute for one second. On the out of the calls, 31, I, I know our neighbors have had experiences and challenges.
It's, it's a combination of multiple areas, it's not just Viana. Viana isn't the majority of that, it's, a lot of the local departments are under staff and having a problem finding staffing. And we're relying on one another to make up the difference sometimes. That also includes out-of-town fire-related responses also. So there were quite a few of those last time.
That's a little skewed, what it normally is on the ins and outs, aren't they?
Usually they're, yeah, around even, and we're usually, without looking at history, we're probably about 15 to 20 average, in and out.
Yeah, I thought the same thing, Mr. Brad, that might be the reason.
Yeah, I double-checked that number when I saw it, so.
Thank you, Chief, did you hear the wrong one just here?
We used 408 gallons of gasoline, 74 gallons of diesel, totaling 483 gallons. Firehouse 51 was closed, 46 out of a possible 62 ships for the month. The parking lights to the rear of Firehouse 18 and road department overseeing the parking lot behind the station there and for the rental hall have been completed. There was a recommendation by the installer today to possibly put up one more light out there that would shine over top of the recycle bin area and illuminate that at night.
What's the cost of this?
You said it was going to be right around $400, he's going to write something up for me, so.
Yeah, let's, let's take it.
I have station 18 kitchen on there, that's as a motion, we'll discuss that in a minute. Hiring two firefighters and purchase of a new ambulance are all in the motion, so that's it for my report.
Any questions on those items from our trustees?
No, just thank you for getting the lighting in the rear station.
Start with the motions, Chief.
Yeah, number one, I'd like a motion to allow the fire chief to enter into a contract to hire Ryan Construction at a combined cost of $44,080 to complete renovations of Firehouse 18. This work will include renovations of the upstairs kitchen at a total cost of $37,550, and new tile and drains in the men's restroom shower at a total price of $6,350 totaling the 44.
I'd like to make that motion, to hire Ryan Construction for $44,080 for the kitchen and restroom. Men's restroom.
Got it. One second. Okay, I'll make the motion as presented, the, I'm seconding the motion. And it's time we'll open this discussion.
Chief, we did get a couple vendors. I reached out to multiple vendors, received seven replies, and this was normal prices I received back, except for Pecto Electric only quoting the electrical work.
Seven?
Seven.
You got one?
Seven.
I have a couple of questions if you're down there. And, uh, this is all original, correct, to the building, perhaps? So this goes back to the 80s, late 70s?
I don't know when to go.
But I was after a while.
Construction, yeah.
Yes, so quite some time. And then, what would be the timeframe to get this worked out? How many weeks do you have?
Um, I haven't talked to him recently, but he said he would fit us in as soon as possible a few weeks ago.
What's that going to mean to, you know, the staff, while this is being torn up and remodeled?
It, it shouldn't have that much of an impact, I mean.
How about the shower area, since that's kind of.
Good way of showering.
So you can just take it to be a, yeah, gendered home, yeah. Because that's kind of critical for sure, I think, for fire.
Absolutely.
And the last question I have, obviously you have the funding to cover this, correct? Or funding?
Yes, funding as well.
Just to make sure, that's all the questions I have. Any other questions?
No, I just, uh, thank you, Chief, we've been kind of going back and forth, this original request was October of '22, I think. We kind of talked about using our own funding. But then we discussed, and you had it on the available, so, um, thank you for being physically responsible, being able to do this upgrade. Our fire and energy.
Thank you. Or any additional questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Devitt?
Yes.
Mr. Salmons?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to ask the trustees for a motion to allow the fire chief to enter into a purchase agreement with Penn Care Medical for the purchase of a 2024 Type III Medics RP94 7.3-liter V8 gas chassis ambulance at a total cost of $147,001.
Think you can reduce that to $1?
I might be able to.
I'll make the motion to purchase the ambulance at $147,001.
I'll second.
Any additional discussion of this?
Yes, um, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just trying to answer my question.
Uh, Chief, a couple things, with purchase of this ambulance, how many relative, that'd be three relatively new ambulances in Dalta?
Yeah, that'll be three in the last four years.
And some of that was a CARESAC?
The first one was CARESAC, part of the CARESAC, or maybe that was all CARESAC except the work, equipment and the, uh, outfitting of it.
So, um, that being said, how long you think it will be? How long can we function with these three without having to purchase nothing? Five years?
I, I'm hoping somewhere between three and five years before we look at a replacement, yes.
I just think, we are a fire department, but we do majority EMS work. And they get the miles put on.
Yes.
We've been very fortunate, and then, as trustee Devitt's talked about, you're being diligent with your budget, um, we talked about monies being put aside for vehicle purchases. 137, 147,000 is a lot of money, but let's buy a fire truck. We're talking about 800,000 for pump updates, right? So, um, we appreciate the fact, I appreciate the fact that you've been pretty conscientious with the budget, making sure that money's there. And to be able to purchase an ambulance or any piece apparatus without having to loan, like the one we're going to pay off for the USDA for ambulance that's going to cycle out. I think that's great, I agree we do that, not finance, so I appreciate it. And the other question I have, this, this was a demo, so it's either west one, correct?
Well, it, it's demo, but it's still in production life.
Yeah, it hasn't gone, it's coming right off the lines.
Yes, we won't receive this until early May.
It's still pulled and done.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's the only question I have. Any other questions?
Yes, uh, so we, Dan talked a little bit about the new deal, have we heard anything on that? I haven't been able to call. Okay. And how much do we think we can get back? I know it's like 36,000, what was it, what did the going range or something?
To sell the one.
To sell it.
That's going to be.
It varies historically, we've got right around $10,000 per unit of units.
Okay.
There's no additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Salmons?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera?
Yes.
Mrs. Devitt? Yes.
All right, thank you. Finally, tonight, I'd like to ask the trustees for a motion to allow the fire chief to hire both Ms. Emily Stone and Mr. Jeremy Glass as full-time career firefighter paramedics. These hirings will be contingent upon both passing a thorough background investigation, a physical agility, also known as CPAT, a physical examination as currently required, and outlined by the Ohio Police and Fire Pension Board, and successfully passing a one-year probationary period. Mr. Glass will be hired at a rate of 95% of the firefighter's full wage, and Ms. Stone at 90% as permitted under the current collective bargaining agreement. And as a special note, this is what we approve the memorandum of understanding.
That's right. Before we go further, did you, did you want to do this now, introduce them prior, or you want to wait and see if we hire them? Let's wait and see if we hire them. All right, um, yeah. One, one other thing I want to point out is, if we weren't at our last meeting, we had a plan to, through our collective bargaining agreement, to hire in the three-year period, three additional full-time firemen. We moved it up here, so we hired one last year, and we're going to hire two this year because of staffing issues that we have. And once again, if our chief has a big budget to be able to do that, afford to do that. So, uh, it, it's going to help our, I believe it's going to help our management immensely. Uh, we rely a lot on part-timers also, so we have a base, strong, full-time force. It takes a little bit, they rely, have to rely on a part-timer student. Aren't, they move from department to department to part-timers, and whoever's, you know, available on certain days is unknown, so. I, I appreciate the fact that we're able to do this. So is any motion? No, I thought, I think we should do a motion separately for each one. Okay, I, I would, Mr. Chairman, I would prefer to do that.
If you give that motion.
I'd like, I'll, I'll just start off. I'd like to make a motion to hire Ms. Emily Stone as a career, full-time career firefighter paramedic. With, with contingent, we can go with the chief's, contingent on passing the CPAT physical examination as currently outlined into the Ohio Police and Fire Pension Board, and passing in one-year probationary period. Her rate will be at 90% as permitted under our collective bargaining agreement. Your second?
I'll second.
Any additional discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ferrera?
Yes.
Mrs. Devitt? Yes. Mr. Salmons?
Yes. And before we introduce, we'll go on to the next item. Is there a motion for the next item? I'd like to make a motion that we hire Mr. Jeremy Glass as a full-time career firefighter paramedic. Once again, contingent upon passing a thorough background investigation, physical agility tests, CPAT, a physical examination as currently required, outlined by the Ohio Police and Fire Pension Board, and successfully passing in one-year probationary period. Mr. Glass would be hired at 95% of the firefighter's full wage, under the current collective bargaining agreement.
Second motion.
Okay, any discussion on that motion as presented? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Devitt? Yes. Mr. Salmons?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera?
Yes. At this time, I would like to welcome our new employees up front, say a little bit about themselves.
We're going to swear them in at another date to ask.
Since you're both here, if you want, no, we have our pools here, they don't have to. Tell us a little bit about yourself, shake your. Hold your hands. Play hand with, play manual.
Oh, my name is Jeremy. I've been part-time here for, I think, about five years now. I became a paramedic a couple of months ago with announcements I gave in my class. So looking to pursue the full-time, and I finally got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Beverly, I'm 22, I currently live in Hazena. I have been, well, I've been part-time for, for the past three years. It's been my dream to become full-time, so, for you to know, and I can finally say I made it again. Jeremy and I were just in the same medic class. We graduated in December together, so really looking forward to advancing my career.
Just a little tidbit that we heard before the meeting, you were on six lines, is that right?
Yeah, six or seven, I was on the school like four hours.
Today, and she took the job. It's back to that. Spend as much money. No, I don't think I'll get there. How about, uh?
Okay, the road report for the month of March, we have six-hundred-and-sixty-three regular hours worked. We had nine overtime hours. That was the, hopefully the last bit of the ash and plow for the year. We'll see, because Thursday looks like it might get a little shot. Um, total six-hundred-and-seventy-two, uh, six-hundred-and-seventy-two total hours worked. So of that, we had thirty-five administration, we had a hundred-and-thirty in road projects. Uh, that was primarily road pavement, vermin and prep. Routine road maintenance, we had a hundred-and-ten hours, that was, so we did some patching. Uh, storm, uh, culvert we had replaced on West A Street that was rotted out. We had de-icing plow, we had seventy hours, we had forty-four, used forty-four tons of anticeat, a hundred-and-forty-three miles. Equipment maintenance and repairs, we had a hundred-and-fifteen hours, we've been working on the grader. Got some electrical issues with the starting, the starter. Uh, the GeoVex sweeper is getting prepped to to go out, uh, probably this week or next week, we'll start sweeping streets and we did some repairs at that road. Tree planting, we had four hours, we had a tree on Wood Street that was out in the middle of the road, which I think after my investigation, I think it fell off somebody's truck, because it had a straight pedal on it, but there were no trees around, there were cuts. I guess somebody called us out. A hundred hours at the cemetery, we had three cremations and, uh, five burials last month. Signs weighed three hours and that was, and we don't have any cameras, but election day, the stop sign at the end of our driveway was moto. So I'm assuming somebody voted and hit that, because it was snow that that morning. Uh, we threw our shop time, eight hours road information, that was primarily, we went to the bid openings for our paving projects and we met with the county on issue one projects. Safety and train, we had four hours CL train and we had twenty hours to park, we opened the bathroom, so all three bathrooms are open. Everyone's ready to go.
Dumpster.
And and the dumpsters wasn't, I'm supposed to start April first, so if it's not there tomorrow, I'll call.
It wasn't there today.
It wasn't on, okay. I'll call for it. Supposed to bring it back, usually April first they start that dumpster and the one at the cemetery. Fuel report, uh, department used sixty-point-five, fifty, sixty-point-five gallons of gasoline, three-hundred-and-twenty-nine-point-ten gallons of diesel fuel. Cemetery used eighteen-point-eight gallons of gasoline. The senior van used twelve-point-seven gallons of gas and the code enforcement officer used fourteen-point-ten gallons of gas. That's all I have to report.
Uh, before we end the roast, just wanna remind, uh, everyone, Jamie's crew is down two key members. Uh, we had a resident on one gentleman, who's been down to how many years?
Seventeen and a half.
Seventeen years, those are big shoes to fill, we're looking to replace that person. And another key operator, uh, is on, uh, workers' call. So his staff is virtually cut in half, so, uh, kudos to Jamie, stepping up, and I know you weren't on film, but if there was a question for something to be done, just tell his, his crew isn't bad, so, all right, Jamie.
Thank you. Uh, road, road items, the first item, I would like the trustees to make a motion to hire a local contractor to replace the exterior front door on the road and fire department going to the office area at a cost of thirty-five hundred dollars.
I would like to make the motion to hire, um, the local contractor to install a new exterior front door on the road and fire department office entrance. It's a cost of three thousand five hundred dollars.
My second. Any discussion on that? Yes, Jamie, uh, get a couple people.
Yeah, we, uh, well, the only other one that I had contacted, three, two of them did give me a quote, like, fine construction. And the other one?
I take it's this story?
The one, yeah, right, yes, right, it was like forty-six hundred.
And then this would be K, Emily, that you got?
Stop there.
Right?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Suddles?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Devitts?
Yes.
Second item on the road items, uh, as as Mr. Ferrer said, we are taking applications till April twelfth for a full-time hire at the department, so if you know anybody, uh, send them to the administration building here. Tickets here from eight to four, so they can pick up an application and return it to the same place, so.
How are we doing?
Uh, we've had applications, so.
And it's posted on the website and scroll down, uh, following the dates there.
So that's it for the road items, cemetery items. Uh, I would ask the trustees to make a motion to hire Wayne Jarrett as the seasonal cemetery employee at a wage of fifty dollars per hour, but the position will not include benefits. Wayne has worked, uh, just so you know, background, he's worked for us, uh, two or three years.
This will run until what, end of October?
Yeah, roughly, well, it was usually sometime in October.
Uh, one thing, I didn't say the position will not include benefits, we do pay the PERS.
Yeah, that, uh, yeah, I can talk to you.
It just, just so that, because most part-time positions, we don't have to pay into the pension, correct? We don't pay for the police fire or the police.
Yeah, but it is, um, yes, we do pay PERS on, I'll stay with them. There's only one other person who's not.
We pay our part-time firemen in the PERS.
Uh, no, they are, actually, they are social security, however, the medics offer PERS.
There's, there's five, yeah, that's all, we just, we just put it right there, they're not fired, not fired.
Not fired.
Okay. As it deserves, motion to that?
I'll make a motion to hire Wayne Jarrett, uh, as a cemetery seasonal employee at hourly wage of fifteen dollars, position will not include benefits.
Uh, so, any discussion? Just that, I know that in the past, he's been a pretty good attack. Uh, that's, you wanna talk about a tedious job, go to cemetery TV or go on every grave marker and then start again, you're done. That's about it, so I, I'm glad that you guys have come and passed it. Roll call, please.
Okay, um, Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Devitts?
Yes.
Mr. Suddles?
Yes.
And here, next, I'd like to have a motion by the trustees to hire DSL excavating to perform the landscaping around Colman Barrier at the cemetery. And it costs sixteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five.
Join to elaborate on that, um, then we can make the motion, you know, have the discussion.
Yeah.
Your motion.
Uh, I would like to make a motion to hire DSL excavating to perform landscaping around Colman Barrier in section, uh, cost of sixteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five.
Second. I'll make the, uh, second motion presented by Mrs. Devitts. Any discussion at this time?
Yes.
Jamie?
And I think I discussed this this afternoon.
Yep.
Um, when we had our department, we, we discussed this last week, um, there was another company we were gonna hire. Can you explain why you're gonna go with this gentleman's then?
Yeah, after, uh, initially, when I looked at the, the bid, there was another company that was a little bit lower. Uh, but then, these were a, you could, you could do these one of two ways, one of the two ways. You could have, you could have a.
Architect design the landscaping, you know, somebody to know something about landscaping.
You develop, you develop the plans, then you give the plans to contractor. It's everybody's, it's exactly the same thing. Uh, we, we didn't feel anyone wanted to do that, so we did what we, we call a design build. So we gave the, the landscape from the opportunity, here's where we were, uh, kind of a base idea of what we've done. Now you tell us what you're doing, what the cost is, so they, they, it's a design build, so they give you the design, so after looking at it, I felt that DSL designs a little better. The other company was using boxwoods in, in all locations around Colman Barrier. His had some views, four-foot dwarf views on the three sides behind the Colman Barrier, like, beyond the north, south and east side. Then the walkway would have the boxwoods. And I thought that was gonna be just the elevation difference, I thought it was gonna look a lot better. From, you know, the aesthetic view, I think it's gonna, I think it can stand out a bit.
And regions, we talked about.
Yeah, the views are a lot less, the boxwoods, typically they grow into a type of hedge, so you got a hedge rim. The boxwood, uh, the, the views do still require a little bit of hedge rim, but not a lot. So I just, I, that was one of the reasons, and the other reason, the main reason was, I think it's gonna stand out a little better. And we decided, we did have, we did have, um, a price per tree to have trees planted, but we, we decided we're gonna do that. We made a tree planting later, because we wanna plant them now, but we, we'll plant them in the fall. But for now, I think, so I thought the design was a little better, that's, that's kind of why I switched my.
So they're not necessarily, they're not the most.
No, not the most, I think, I think it's the better design, yes.
Just, I guess I wanted to clarify, because I understand, I don't know the difference between a U and a box, you tried to explain to me today. But you think that that's gonna be a better look, we, we discussed this before, that's critical of the Colman Barrier, so it doesn't look like some big domes that can happen.
I think, and if you can picture it here, the boxwoods, like we have up around the gazebo. Uh, we have some down by the digital sign on the north end of the green, uh, so, so those, the, so if you have those up the walkway, then you'll also have those on the perimeter, everything's the same height. So if you think about views are on the backside of the digital sign down there, those are views. So they, so I think that the height difference is gonna give a little, it's gonna pop out a little bit.
So is it safe to say that the difference was in the material being suggested because of this?
Yeah, yeah, and the type of plants, yes.
Type of plants.
Yes, it's easier harder to plant these, and it's, and I think they're more expensive than the box.
All right, any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Devitts?
Yes.
Mr. Suddles?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
Uh, cemetery, that's the last motion, cemetery, but one other item, just so the public knows, we do, the spring cleanup is gonna be the fifteenth through the nineteenth of April. So if you have items at the cemetery, make sure you get them off.
What?
The science.
We did this.
Next.
So we'll put it on, it'll be on, it'll be on the face.
We'll, we'll put it, if we can put it on Facebook, that would be lovely.
The website and the digital sign down the green, so, but just so you know, we are going to plan up the fifth season.
Okay.
Okay, park items, uh, like a motion from the trustees to hire Edward Fabian as the park seasonal employee at an hourly wage fifteen dollars per hour, and again, this position will not include benefits with the exception of PERS. Over.
Okay, is there a motion for the other?
I'll make a motion to hire Edward Fabian as a park seasonal employee at an hourly wage fifteen dollars and a half. The position will not include benefits.
Your second? Our second motion is presented by Mrs. Devitts. Uh, discussion? I'm gonna, I'm gonna reserve some discussion. The only discussion I have is, again, same way as the cemetery, still early.
Oh, yeah, October, sometime in October, usually.
Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Suddles?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Devitts?
Yes.
And you'll start, or I'll start, you'll start.
Uh, you know what, I think I'll start him Wednesday, because we're gonna get paid tomorrow, so.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, the second item is the park.
What, what do we, do we limit hours? Was it twenty or thirty hours?
Well, we, twenty, we usually wait twenty to thirty hours, so.
Is that what it's gonna be?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I don't like over thirty.
No, I, I limited it last year to twenty, but we had that range for twenty, thirty.
And, and I'm, yes, twenty to thirty, yeah, I was gonna say. Um, this particular gentleman has some, some skills that may be useful for the last year, the road department.
Yeah, saw it off the, you know.
So if, if, like, we get a random, if something, I may need the road department to do some things.
All right.
Um, the next item is the, like, get a motion from the trustees to hire Jensen Lock and Alarm of Youngstown, Ohio, to install a new time box at the park bathrooms at, estimate cost thirty-five, three thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Um, that money's out of your finances and we are.
That money's out of parks.
Okay, any discussion on that, on the project?
We can, yeah, we can do it. We'll make that part of the motion. Are you gonna take that?
How far, improvement? Um, not unless you guys want to take it.
Well, if you got, you got a part improvement, I really take it out of there.
Okay.
Um, yeah, but I just, I didn't know, because we discussed all that. I made a motion that we hire Jensen Lock and Alarm of Youngstown to install new time locks on park bathrooms at, estimate cost of three thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Second one.
Any discussion on that? That's including handicap, handicap also, correct?
And when is this title?
Uh, I, I, pretty soon, pretty quick, yeah, I didn't give an exact date, but I think it's gonna be.
Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Devitts?
Yes.
Mr. Suddles?
Yes.
The last item I have, and just information for the, uh, residents, we talked about this last month, but I just, it's come up. I don't think, definitely have another thing for this, so the scrap tire drop-off is May fourth for making the, the item publication. So, uh, and it's only for township residents, nineteen-inch tires or smaller. And, um, again, the, not our rule, but the federal law says you can only carry a maximum ten unless you have a tire hauler's permit. If you bring fifteen, I'm not gonna turn it in, but that's, I'm just, you know.
Um, I think this year, we said this, and I'll try to check that account, see if it'll come available. I, I think we should check each of the township residents. Other communities do that, the only thing I'm getting at, I wanna get as many tires as I can if they're in township, but I don't think we're taking advantage of, we were gonna do two last year, we just, oh, I'm on the first time. It's, it's grant money that we received to, to do this, but if, if we, I think we should put some control, if I can, I know you've got people that help unload the tires down there, but I, I can maybe help you check.
No, no, absolutely, I don't care, and you're right, we went, uh, we only had one tire drive last year, we went twelve hundred over the grant and they increased the grant from, it used to be about twenty-eight under, it increased it to forty-one, I think we still live by that. So, yeah, I, I don't mind, you know, if you're there, most of us there kinda know, most, you know, some, one of us would know rather, you know.
Yeah, well, mostly it might be somebody, and I, I remember the, you know, fellow had a, you know, tires back there for ten years, and finally decided to bring it up. We wouldn't know him, but I just wanna make sure they're township residents.
Yeah, yeah, another thing is, typical, a typical resident, I mean, how, how many people here got more than ten tires in their yard? Usually, you don't accumulate, a normal person doesn't accumulate that many tires, so, and that's all I have left.
On the, on the agenda, you have your fence, field one, that's mine. Okay, I don't have that. I'll, I'll remember that. Uh, you want me to bring them on?
Yeah, please.
You want me to bring them on?
Yeah.
Okay. I was approached by, or usually, they're putting new fence down around field five. Um, on field one, I remember, I don't know if you all were here, uh, one of our employees damaged the fence on four, field one. This company has agreed, the one that they're going with is Esther Lee Fence Company. Uh, they have agreed to fix that, uh, section of the, on field one, it, it was a four-hundred-and-fifty-dollar charge to it. We fixed it and included in what the youth leagues pay. Youth approached and said, would the township be willing to at least give that four-hundred-and-fifty dollars and we're gonna be to the project, that they're doing, it's a safety issue. Yeah, and, and we're, we're paying for the field, but the one is broken, uh, it's a safety issue, isn't it?
Absolutely.
So it must have come out of it. Uh, we're gonna take it out of our, our, yeah. Uh, we're gonna have to pay for it anyway, so I'd just like to contribute the four-hundred-and-fifty dollars towards the youth leagues' expense to do the fencing stuff. So I'd like to make a motion that we, um, get the. So I'd like to make a motion that we, um, get to give the Brookfield youth baseball four hundred and fifty dollars towards the fence.
My second.
Any discussion on the matter?
Yeah, you'll be okay with this?
Rule call please.
Um, Mrs. Devitts, yes, Mr. Suttles?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
All right, Officer Ross.
Last, we're up with. So here you are, Mr. Chandler. Here comes tonight, you know, uh, some kind of building permits issue for last meeting, we've got, uh, here thirteen eighty-nine Broadway, that's the stay law. Management building, uh, we got seven eighty-four Valley Drive, uh, Simon's is the last name, roof replacement, fifteen fifty Moore Road, uh, it was Kirkson. He offered his H B tone recovery, he started better accessory garage, whole foundation. And lastly, it's four forty-six Winter Green, uh, last name's Humphrey Residential Editions, those are the permits we have. Uh, complaint, uh, some old, some old ones, some new here, um, eight century Boyd Street, uh, that's a trailer of the exterior property satisfaction. Six forty-eight James Street, uh, complaining about the condition, exterior property. Eleven fifty-five West Ace Street, that vehicle's free, I just go out and take photos, I may have to take the health department, all the, that one. Eight forty-five Hobie Porch trash is free, I contacted the property management, they took care of it. Seven, so sixty-seven sixteen Stewart Sharon Rhodes was a fire damage structure, uh, did get a complaint on that, trash and construction free in the yard. Uh, I did send a letter to the owner, the owner called me last week and had a little discussion about the issues there, so we'll keep an eye on that. I have to get help, but I'll go that module. New, newer complaint at seventy-four forty-five Sharon Road, uh, we've got rubbish in the green yard, just wanted to suppose that today, that's some, somebody's had to get a notice for that issue. Eleven twenty-one Sixth Street, this has been on for years, you know, not a lot of problem with open dumping. Uh, health department has filed charges, they had an initial hearing, they covered it, but changed. Part of we did not guilty, uh, criminal pre-trial set for June sixth, so hopefully we get some movement on that this year. I had three here, address assignment request, uh, we've got three under the lots, Le Rose, behind Sparkle, and the owner of Robins Real Estate Investments called me. And I like his addresses on those because I think he's going to build a house. One immediately, and maybe two or three more down, down the river. So he got a sewer extension in, so he's kind of interested, he's a little bit writing, anxious to get started on that project there, so we'd like to probably have at least three houses back there. Nine hundred Irvine Avenue, uh, expedition site work for the proposed Sinoco, uh, gas station. Again, I'm not aware of any permit from the county, that they usually let me know what's going on with building permits, but I haven't heard anything. That's Trump soil and water and monitoring that site. He did send them a letter, it is under an acre, so he does, they have a whole lot of enforcement. He said he'd keep an eye on the forest, uh, work has stopped for now, excavation. So I had to go down there like at least four days a week and see what's going on and stuff. Lastly, we've got seven, two seven one Shannon Road, and that is the Dollar Tree, and they're doing their, they started their excavation in the sidewalk. Again, you know, Trump town might as well be maybe reviewing, something for a permit, I'm not aware, but they don't want me to, so, you know, to actually get some comments. And I did see two more, all of them, so the water today, he said, yeah, their, their engineering's approved, their soil, their swift is approved. They just have to get controls into place, they're saying they're going to check it out later in the week to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to do. That's about all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, people, once again, good to see you, you know, that once quarter, um, appreciate the work that you're doing out there. Uh, reports that you provide, and we have a couple of issues such as the Sinoco station, that's a little bit emotional to the neighborhood down there, so I appreciate you keeping an eye.
I guess congratulations on the winner again, and grand walk. Everyone doing well?
Hey, everybody doing good, great work.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, van report.
Thank you, Mrs. Devitts.
Uh, senior, senior citizen, uh, van report, money plus twenty-five dollars. Uh, for your share just three, volunteer hours.
Miles Griffin.
Miles Griffin. A four, volunteer driver hours that were donated, it was yes, um, seven point seven five, pinch off one, total eight point seven five. And last, I knew we had two applications, I think applications for drivers, they were just background stuff going on with.
Thanks for the report, uh, anything else under old business, we got? And new business, where we had a street light, thank you Troy.
Thank you Troy.
Update on grant applications?
Yes, on Friday, we submitted, um, with that assistance, assistance to Senator Ryan, you know, highest state, we, we applied for the highest state capital budget funding. Is to enable a, uh, the project that we submitted was the lights down the park. So I had two, two phone calls in the last two months with Dustin, and, um, he gave me the tools for everything to gather everything ready. He, uh, did everything for the application for us, he told me to reach out to businesses and local people, local community, uh, to get letters of support, so we reached out, um, to the police department, obviously the youth league, the adaptively, uh, business, I reached out to the school. Dustin gave me a crack at the letter I sent, and each of the entities were, was able to kind of plot a little paragraph. Uh, not sure, we will find out on that one, there is no match, uh, the money that we have put into the park are ready for the infrastructure, for the electric. Uh, we kind of estimate about.
Do you want? You still want?
No, mine's up. The money that we had already invested in the park was around fifty, fifty-ish thousand dollars, um, so we were able to use that towards kind of, he had talked about in kind. Minds, so we were able to do that. The money we requested was four hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. So I, again, I did not research when we hear back on that, but, um, that was our first one, so we have that under our belt. And we'll be able to utilize that if we wanted to, to apply for other, uh, funding. He had made mention in blog calls this month, he had made mention some other, um, possible projects and, and grant opportunities, so I have six listed here. So we've gone through and kind of maybe prioritize what we would like to do next or consider next. We have talked, I think, as a board, maybe looking into this or ultimately looking back. Pick a ball down at the, at the park, but other opportunities for sidewalks are possibly through, um, East Gate, it's art, art funding. There's one coming up, it's land water, it's coming up in the fall, land water conservation grant. Uh, he was just awarded for St. Clairsville, what they just were awarded, one ninety dollars, if I can correct my comments. Couple of weeks ago, last week, and it was for down at their park to upgrade, um, their facilities down there, so. Pretty good communication so far, um, happy with how things are going. We're going to apply hopefully for the opportunity of Appalachia coming up, so after that call, uh, in the next two weeks, I will keep you all posted. But so far, so good.
Thank you.
Banquet hall, it's me too. Uh, we had gone back and forth, uh, and had talked about what we did in the meeting room here and operating things, painting, uh, and next, after we finish this project next, I would start kind of opening the discussion up for the banquet hall. Um, we had found out that, that our ARPA money is freed up now that we found out from commissioners that the Uawa project that we paid for. We kind of look at projects that, that to invest in, that we get money, um, back from, we rent, we rent the social hall there for three, two fifty, uh, with a refund if you clean the hall. So trying to look at, at different avenues, obviously, uh, we get money back, I think last year we got twelve-ish thousand dollars back from that. I'd like to set up a meeting with the two of you, um, I walked through with chief, I walked through with Captain Prisanto, um, like a month ago, kind of looking over the scope of work, we made a list, um, I'm not sure my scope of work is, is what you guys kind of want to do. So I'd like to set up a meeting, if possible, this week, maybe by Friday. I've already walked through with two different contractors, I'm walking through two more on Wednesday, we're going to navigate the blood drive a little bit. I have given everyone a list of six-ish, seven, eight items, so everybody's been given the same kind of scope of work. I don't know if it was possible to set a meeting.
When are you, when are you looking at calendar, where you're working?
Yeah, Thursday morning, Thursday afternoon, on the banquet hall, Friday.
I mean, Friday at ten, I was thinking, I'm hoping to get the other two days back.
Friday at ten, Dan?
We have a meeting Thursday, up there Thursday, yeah, Friday.
Want to take that?
Yep.
Here?
Yeah, okay, all right, thanks. So we'll put that on for Tabitha, but, um, I will email you all the scope of work that I've sent the contractors thus far, and we can kind of go over it and have everything. I hope to have all the information ready. Uh, I looked on the calendar and I don't know how quick we could, we could move, but, um, I talked to Tabitha to see if there was any times available between now and June, June is our wildly busy, uh, month down there, June, July for graduation parties. And my goal was to hopefully maybe get some things moving prior to that, if possible, so I have dates and everything.
And this will be passed through ARPA funds?
I was looking at ARPA, I know, um.
You're assuming I went to.
Yeah, I know last year, I think, again, the money goes in the general fund that's, that's generated by, um, the banquet hall. So that actually just goes there. I didn't know if ARPA was something that we would consider with this, I think, as opposed to going through the general fund, so.
I think that's just work with him. Okay, this, this is off route. Sure. Uh, having said that, well, go ahead, I'll, I'll ask.
No, that was, that was it, so I will email you all the information that I have thus far, but again, Friday, I would like to review everything with you guys. Thank you.
All right, you've got your banners.
Okay, um, I have done this, I think this is year three. Okay, so I did this as just a citizen, we, we formed it, um, the commission, historic commission, we talked about it. I'm a graphic designer by trade, I donate all my time, um, to this. We charge, uh, this year we're going to charge eighty-five dollars, that is to pay for the banner, um, and then that money goes kind of into beautification, uh, actually replaces the banners that, that are, uh, broken up by the wind. The news that we're going to submit to this team, so hopefully it's in this next addition, I'm going to put this Facebook. But same, uh, thing that we've done every year, four by six picture, full name of honorary, of military service, they serves, and, um, contact phone number if I have any questions. We have, last year we got all ten up, I have none in the hallway here, so the banners will go directly up onto the, to the light posts. Uh, before we had kind of an overage, and they went into the hall, uh, this year, we're going to have all ten up on the posts, and anything I get extra will go into the, the hall, so. Just let you know, we'll put that on social media, uh, tonight, tomorrow. And that is all.
Thank you.
Social media falls.
Yes, um, and you out there, you use social media, which the overthoughts don't do as much, but.
Actually, they do statistically.
There's a lot of stuff going on on social media. Uh, I've noticed when it comes to townships recently, and, um, some controversial things that are going on, uh, social media is being, it's real fine line on what employees and do say on social media. But we didn't have a social media policy that covered the whole township. Police department has one, the fire department has one, uh, have a general one, so I asked our office coordinator if she would take the two, which I gave you both a copy of, and marry them, and, and maybe come up with a township one. So I'd like you guys to look it over, I mean, in the next month, and if you think, well, uh, I'd like to see this added, this subtracted, whatever. Um, and then I would like to make this Brookfield Township social media policy all inclusive of all departments. Uh, and put in our policy manual, which is a policy manual, I don't know if you all looked at it lately, but it's like nineteen eighties page. So I, I would like to take that one as somewhat of a project with all our department heads and try to tweak that to make our policy manual more, um, into the century. So, but I would like you to look at that, and I'd like to, once we do, adopt this as, as a policy for our employees.
Just a question I asked, will you, should this go into the prosecutor or legal?
Um, I don't think there'd be a problem if you would like me to take it, take it for a thought. Dan, did you, was yours go, ours, ours already, ours is put together by attorneys, that's. Yeah, because it kind of took a lot of meat out of yours to this one, I believe.
Yeah, it's, the one we use pretty thorough, it's flexible.
That's only a suggestion, I mean, I thank you for doing this, but that's one thing I would, is to make sure there's another. We all know that everyone has freedom of speech, it's a fine line with employees, um, when they're off, when they're not working. Uh, that kind of addresses some of it, I, I just don't want us to go down that, I mean, that's how a lot of people communicate, so. I think we need to be cognizant at least of any abuses and, and, and hold employees to our policy.
No, well said, well said. All right, at this point, uh, again, tables, tables, okay.
So, well, real quick, we, uh, we talked about our banquet hall, and those of you in the community who know a lot of graduation parties are held there. It's meant for our community members, although you rent from outside, at a, a lower cost than it would be for other places. Well, we had an issue a couple of years ago, and I won't go into all the details, but all our tables and chairs ended up, they weren't ours, and a group took them. So we didn't have it, so to rent the hall, you need tables and chairs, so we purchased X number of tables, X number of chairs. We had some chairs that were donated from Gasser Chair, the trustee, Gary Lees, was here, uh, and was able to do that. But we're in a situation now where we have two hundred and twenty-five chairs, and only rooming around a table for a hundred and sixty. So people are telling me to rent our hall, but they got to go to a rental corral and rent tables to supplement what we have. So I would like to, uh, make a motion to, uh, we, we get the tables at Sands, uh, they're lifetime guarantee, and I know from the last time is they stand by, if they break, you take it back, we give you new. They're ninety-nine dollars a piece, and I'd like, uh, to make motion that we purchase eight tables for our banquet hall.
Any additional discussion on the purchase of eight, eight tables?
Is that just a general problem?
Yes.
Okay.
Additional discussion, rule call please.
Mr. Suttles?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mrs. Devitts?
I don't think. Again, we're going to have a public comment and ask, as I said earlier, uh, to keep it brief, uh, hopefully we covered a lot, we went through the meeting very thorough. And if there are questions, just put your name and your address, so we can know you're from the township, and to be brief, and not try to answer questions my dad. Or any discussion, questions tonight that we can address.
My name's Derek Holson, I'm here from the Brookfield Board of Education, uh, speaking with my superintendent and my supervisor for the maintenance. You know, we have a lot going on at school now, and we were wondering if the township would be willing to donate any surplus grinding bags for us.
You mind?
We'd be, we'd be happy with a hundred tons, that would be great, anything would help, if you lost a hundred less tons, we'd have to.
Just for something specific there?
Yeah, I think so, this, this course, the road that is, that's going up forward, all the work we're doing, they're basically, there's, we just eat dirt, love without it. So we have to kind of put down something so we can have access to it up there.
So one question I have is, um, have you contracted with somebody to do that work? Or is this, what I'm getting at is, are we, if we have our, the grindings, are we donating to the school, or are you under contract with somebody that the vendor is supposed to be providing this, as part of the project?
I don't think we've contracted anything for that yet.
Okay, because I just don't want to supplement a, a contractor.
No, we haven't, we don't, we have a contractor.
Because this would be. Because this would be more, more use as of the school.
Yes.
As you see.
And then we would just have to contract out, or whatever, or make your, or even.
Would we have to bring them there too? You got any means of getting them from?
Yeah, I don't know that I can find that out, I'll figure it back to you.
Do we have a hundred tons, Jamie?
Yeah, we do.
My question was, is the road temporary, or is it going to stay?
I think the plan is that it'll stay, just because of the access up there.
I did, I did talk to Randy a little bit about this, I think what's happened is, they're moving the lights, you know, they're moving the lights to the football field. Some of the locations where the lights are going, they don't have, can't get to them, so they're going to use these to get to those positions where they can use lights. And then I think it's, that's going to stay, it's like a service.
Yeah, that's what I was alluding to, is that, say.
We're helping the district and not the contract.
Right, I mean, not that I want, I, I just think we have to be careful with public funds helping, another public enemy is, is, is okay. But if we are helping a vendor who's being paid to do this, I, I want to be careful.
Well, I, I think that the electric company is doing it, is being paid to put the lights up, but. Then I think there was discussion how to get there.
Yeah.
In the contract, we just, just for the lights, I'll leave moving that.
Okay.
I think, I mean, I think it's a good idea, I think that we can work together, I, I don't know, almost a hundred tons is, what else? Because we're going to get more grindings in a couple of months.
Yeah, so we're going to have some more in the, after the payments.
Right, so our.
We just need to know.
Okay, that's my analysis, are we okay, just doing what we need to be right now, because we're not going to start possibly.
A hundred tons, a hundred tons.
That's ten trouble.
So what do you think, Dan?
Probably about four hundred.
Okay, I, I'd have to agree, as long as our roads, like Hobby Court, or roads that need, an, an, an undedicated road, that needs a little place to reiterate.
So do, prior to the motion, you have to figure out how to get in there, or is that, is that just a nightmare to me?
I think we should, I mean, it could be contingent on that. I would, of course, prefer that you could come and get it, because then, you know, the only thing is, we have to have somebody load the truck, and unload the truck. And, you know, we just talked about with Don, two guys.
They have to have, I, I know they don't have the trucks to haul, so it'd have to be a contractor that comes and gets it, or we have to haul it, so.
All right, do you, you've got a lot on your tape?
We do, but.
How soon do you, do you think these are needed, Gary?
I'd send it better, because we're starting, we've already created contracts for the lighting, so.
They work that out?
Yeah, we can work that out.
Especially if you have any way to get it there, then of course, I just want to make sure I don't overtax our workers.
No, right, and I'll follow up on that, since I'm a major.
I think it's a worthy dedication, and then again, we can work hand in hand, and so, you know, four, five, or one, three C group. And we, you actually own it, as we do, I think it's better in the community, I have no problem with that. So if you make a motion to donate up to a hundred tons of road grindings, to benefit the school lighting project? No, I'm just throwing out my most.
I'll make the motion to our local school districts to use up to a hundred ton of our road lines, the project.
New.
I'll say.
Any additional discussion?
Sports conference.
Any additional discussion on the motions?
No, just, just get with Jamie, I guess.
Absolutely. I, I think it's a worthy cause, so, a little call please.
Mr. Ferrera?
Yes.
Mrs. Devitt, yes, Mr. Salves?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you for coming out, and for any additional discussion or comments before we adjourn.
No, we're going to go, please, call.
Yeah, I mean, from the pub, talk about the pub.
Breaks.
You just said that, huh?
No, I said before we adjourn, um, okay, trustee.
I think I've spoken a lot, um, no, I, I think I don't, I don't think I've got anything to add to it. Just, oh, real quick, just again, thank you for, as a parent, it was lovely for the history, not where you spoke about it, but. Nigel, we were down there in the rain, in the mud, and it was too, too bad, I was ready to finally enjoy ourselves.
You was only wearing shorts on.
No, there was a bunch of shorts on, I had to leave early because it was cold, I said, well, that's what happens, but again, thank you, it's another wonderful, um, community event, so that's it.
Okay, we are going to have our first trustee meeting, uh, since the weather broke, and we're going to have it at our library that you're in. It's going to be on, I know this is day four twenty, but we won't go there. It's going to be on the twentieth of this month, it's Saturday from ten to noon at our library. And it's a meeting like this, but less formal, and if you have any concerns, you just want to sit and talk, we have coffee and donuts. And you're welcome to be there. Another thing I have is, it's kind of, we're in a process with it, but now, there's a, there's a notice out in our lobby, it's on our website. We went out to bid, and it's until the seventeenth, I believe, we were open to bids, when I set that meeting up, at four P M. On the addition to a backup generator to this building, the whole building, including this room. And our fire department, road department complex down there. This is going to provide the ability to have warming or cooling centers, or power outages. We had to go out to bid because we received some proposals, and we were over the seventy-five thousand dollar total to do that. I want to make sure that we have that ability, we've never had it. We used this when we had some power outages last spring, but thank God we had power here. To just use it for people to charge their cell phones or whatever, or warming, or warming stations in it, it was in the spring, so it wasn't too bad. But this is going to be use of ARPA funds, which I believe, on my heart, that's what these ARPA funds should be used for, infrastructure things that help the community. That's what they, this, not that other things we aren't doing, are, but this is, it's right in the wheelhouse of that. And hopefully we get that project done before summer. It's going to tell a lot, some concrete patchwork, to energize both of these buildings, it's going to be a pretty good task. So that, that should be by next meeting, we should know who that company is.
Side note, Trump County made this update, tomorrow's forecast, we haven't had one since last year. It'll just be weather, we're tomorrow night, and you're talking about winds again, and chaos, I just want to let everybody know, could be what we used to have last year, so.
You have a comment? That's why I had to say, Mark, I've received multiple warnings since I've been sitting here, and just to reiterate, they're talking gusts, possibly eighty miles an hour, heavy rain. With a medium potential for tornadoes, so just keep your eye on the sky.
It's easy to be during overnight.
They're talking between eight and ten P M tomorrow evening.
You're right, very good.
The last comment I have is, for our, we have until the end of December this year to allocate the money from projects, ARPA. And we were dealing with to complete the projects, so, you know, in my accurate saying, we have around a quarter thousand of ARPA funds left, across others.
We have not spent, but we still have, you know, some of those. You're talking about your fours, it's yours, yeah.
Yeah, it's, we, I think we were at four ten last year, because of the gas cost, yeah.
Uh, so we may want to, not tonight, it won't be, we can be.
Would you want then Friday to be an ARPA meeting? Or that I don't maybe?
No, I'd rather that, I mean, we, we've opened this up to public several times, and if we're going to engage public, there's suggestions, or is that what you're getting at?
Well, no, I would, I mean.
Maybe you should get that up at ten o'clock in the morning or something.
Well, yeah, I would change it, but I, I would do the research cards with Dean, to see who we're at for this project.
Sure, because we also had Jamie, Bryce and Sparkle want.
Yeah.
I think that's.
Yep.
All right, so we can advertise the meeting for this project, for meeting trustee on the twentieth, and on the seventeenth then?
The seventeenth at four P M.
So you'll give that to?
I can give this to you.
Make sure they're not missing.
That's a good.
That's all. And for the better group, before we go to motion for adjourn? Motion adjourned?
I'll second.
Thank you.